...meeting for Tuesday, August 12th, 2025, beginning at 6:00 PM, at our Cola City Hall located at 13222 Highway 6, Arcola, Texas, 77583, for the purpose of considering the following items. The City Council of the City of Arcola, Texas, deserves the right to meet in closed session on any of the following items should the need arise, and if applicable pursuant to authorization by Title V, Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code. It is now 6:00 PM. I call this meeting to order, and we do have a call. Tonight's invocation will be led by Councilmember Jones, and played by Lieutenant Jackson.
Heavenly Father, we come to you in the name of Jesus. Thank you for this day. Thank you for life, health, and strength. We thank you for all that you've done, or you're gonna do, and all that you've already done. In our behalf, we ask you to come into the hearts of the council and the mayor, and everyone on the governing body, Lord, to make those decisions that are right and best for the city and the citizens. Get yourself out of the way, and let us do what is right. These are our blessings, we ask in Jesus' name.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands white nation under God, indivisible, just as well.
We're now on our roll. Councilmember Evelyn Jones?
Here.
And Pro-Timber Ray Abar?
Yeah.
Councilmember Rosemary Bigby?
Here.
Councilmember Florence Jackson?
Present.
Councilmember Brad Burton?
Yeah.
Also President David Ochs, the Attorney, Andrew Sorenois, City Secretary, and Dr. Annette Morehado, City Administrator. And our finance, Lieutenant Jackson. At this time, uh, City Secretary? Lieutenant Secretary, we will have public comments of a general nature. Citizens who desire to address the City Council with comments of a general nature, will receive at this time, the total amount of time that you may address the Council is limited to three minutes. Unless you need a translator, then you will have six minutes. Lieutenant Secretary, do we have anyone signed up?
No, Mayor.
Okay, uh, well regarding the consent and regular agenda items, do we have anyone signed up for comment?
No, Mayor.
Alright, so at this time, then, we'll move on to the City Council comments. Does any City Council members, do you have any comments? Let me go down the road. Uh, Councilmember Jackson?
No.
Councilmember Bigby?
Uh, just the trucks. The big trucks just stood going up and down the roads. Uh, and I thought we had got a committee to watch trucks. They're supposed to be going through the roads. Did we have to set up a committee?
Uh, we set the committee. We talked, I think PD was kind of monitoring that.
Okay.
Uh, Chief Carr, do you want to speak today, real quick?
We have set up, uh, set up a step program, which is traffic enforcement. So the officers are out from 6:00 AM to 10:00 AM in different areas of the city. And that is one of the areas that the officers hit.
And just the, the, uh, South Pine, North Pine, predominantly that's where the, like she said, it's quieted down in coin.
For the thing, yes.
South and north, more weather for the trucks to go.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have a bunch of big, uh, day. He carried the cars. People had to get off, off of the road. And he tried to make a turn, a turn right there along with his own bag.
Is it any specific time that you're staying? Is it more in seven?
At night, it's like more like 7:30. But I see the police pass through. And it looks like they know when they're passing through or something. But then you get a whoa, 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 and that's the big trucks coming through. So I, I, I don't know.
So is it more than evening, or more than morning time? So I know what time to tell them.
More, more than evening, or early in the morning.
Yeah. Early, like seven.
It's early, early morning and late, late night. Late, early morning, like, you know, 1:00, 2:00 somewhere in the morning. And then, uh, then early like, uh, 6:00, 26:00.
Yeah.
Yeah, seven somewhere. Okay.
But I will say though, I don't know about you, but it's, it's, it's kind, it's calmed down some. But not it, not all, not all.
Calm down a little.
So we'll give them in that area, sure enough. Alright, uh, Mayor Pro-Timber?
No comments.
Councilmember, uh, Jones?
Well, I'd just like to comment on the driveway. I'm so glad that it's a lot better than it was. There's no water standing there, there's no hole to go in. I just don't think the mayor, getting there to comment.
That's the council, that's the council. So thank y'all, thank y'all, y'all. Councilmember Burton?
Yes, this body voted, uh, back in July to do a street rice Boulevard for somebody that was planning on building a house. There are five houses, six houses on Hundred Grove that use that road by name. And, uh, I wonder why this body can't make an exception instead of waiting on, 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 on budget and planning. Because the road that was put on there was rice. That wasn't even budgeted, that wasn't planned. Somebody came up here and said they want to build a house, and the house has not been built yet. It's been, the road's been unused. We used it one time for a, uh, a town hall, which, um, tables and chairs were there. And I wonder why this body can't vote to have Hundred Grove repaired.
Has anyone ever brought it to the attention of someone?
Yes, 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 yes.
Okay, okay, we just.
We'll put it on the agenda for, for action. Yes, sir.
I'm just asking why this body can't make an exception on that, on that particular street.
Well, we don't make exceptions on any particular street. We are doing, we are doing a set of streets, and we have, we just got, uh, the COs and all that stuff done in July, and we are doing a, uh, a step-by-step method of how we're going to address with the street issues. And so you brought that to the attentions, and you.
On several occasions.
Well, Mr. Burton, this is the first time I've heard that, uh, on this, up in this thing. I don't watch, I don't look at your page, Facebook page.
It's not the Facebook page. It's not the Facebook page. I brought up public comments. I even brought the neighbors here, and they stood in here, and they came up here with me. And, uh, I apologize to them in front of this council that this street wasn't going to get fixed because number one is I tried, and number two is, I mean, if I had tried, I just, I felt this body was biased toward me, and I figure it still is. But at the end of the day, I'm not on the taxpayer that's over there that used that road.
So, no. I will, uh, are you done?
I'm done.
Alright. And we are looking at streets. And so that is not something that, we're looking at serving the entire city, all the residents. So, uh, it's, it's, it's not like we're gonna be biased against anybody. We see streets that need to be repaired. We will do, think over in Hundred Grove where the issue is. Uh, this is the same place that I'm guessing. That's where there's been some construction over there. It makes sense to fix the street while it was still constructing homes. And so we will look at that, and we will move accordingly. And at this time, I don't have any comments.
Yeah, dude.
I guess we can then move on to the rest of the agenda.
Agenda item three, consent agenda. All consent agenda items listed are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. Uh, there would be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member requests which event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Agenda item, um, A is consideration of an action or approval of the corrections of the special meeting uh, on Tuesday, June 17th, 2025, adding the names of the speakers from public comment. B, consideration of an action on the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on Tuesday, July 8th, 2025, with the corrections changing MOC report from May 2025 to June 2025, and adding Councilmember Florence Jackson's name to the agenda items eight, A through C. B, uh, approval of the minutes of the following workshops uh, for June 2024 through July 2025.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to, uh, entertain a motion for the approval of these minutes and corrections altogether.
I think the motion will approve the agenda consent item three, A, B, and C for the correction and as they are.
Motion made by Councilmember Jones, second by Councilmember Bigby. All in favor?
Uh.
All opposed? Minister passed.
We're now down to agenda item four, presentation. This is information only. Um, A, July 2025 permit monthly report. Mr. Marquise Walker.
Good evening, councilmembers, Mayor.
Good evening.
I'm Marquise Walker, and I'm the permits administrator, and I'm here to give an account on, of the amount of permits that were issued for the month of July. Um, I have one generator permit, six electric permits, one fence permit, one field dirt permit, five mechanical permits, two roof permits, five plumbing permits, one commercial vendor, and two sign permits, and one driveway permit. Total of 25 permits for the month of July. Any questions?
I can put the light in your face. I don't see you.
Thank you.
Alright. Thank you, Mr. Walker.
Agenda item four B, Fire Marshal update Sergeant Ephraim Burns.
Hey, you doing alright?
Hey.
Mayor, council, citizens, how y'all doing?
How good?
Okay, we got it. Lots of them covering the short distance, so to speak. Um, who's my partner?
Not that 20 minutes.
There you go. I'm gonna start with some extra minutes. Okay, a lot's been going on, uh, from a fire marshal standpoint. And, uh, in a nutshell, we can say education. There's been a lot of education. Uh, since, uh, we assumed our own roles back and forth then, um, a little year ago, uh, it's been a lot of re-educating to the, to business owners and to the public, uh, as a whole. They just didn't understand the process. Even though you might look at it right now like, oh my God, I understand why they don't understand it. It's, it's actually simple. Once you do one simple thing, and we're begging everybody to do, pre-planning meetings. Pre-planning meetings, you get to meet all the players involved, myself, Lawrence, anybody else, current in the department. That's opportunity for the business owners to sit down with everybody in the process, face-to-face, and understand what needs to be done, what's your first steps. And that'll stop a lot of the, you know, the clogging up that we had along the way. A lot of bad information that was given out there, uh, the past couple years, and just to have a, a real tight process where people understand what needed to be done. So with the pre-planning meetings, uh, with the business owners, we eliminate that. Uh, they can see me, they can see everybody that's involved in the whole process, understand what needs to be done, which in the end saves money, and they don't go out and do things that's gonna cost them, uh, money on the back end for having to correct. So, uh, there's our process there. And, um, I said, if things go right, you can get through that process fairly quick. But it pretty much just outlines, uh, the permitting process is done, and inspections along the way, uh, permits, fees need to be paid, so forth, and, uh, get you to a successful venture. We're starting a business by following those steps. Well, as I said, that education was important. And all my use doing this, uh, every time you step out in public, it's all about education, because people just don't know. You don't want to assume that, you know, somebody's trying to, you know, pinch a penny and save you money. You know it's factual sometimes. We want to go to the positive part, you know, educating them about the process. Uh, it's not the old R code. It's not the wild, wild west. Like I just talked to the business owner a while ago, and you kind of trouble. Uh, as a process here, we have a fire code, and we go by that. But overall, goal of everything is to save the citizens, and the visitors come through, to the restaurants and the businesses. So, um, where we stand right now, a lot of the businesses, uh, compliance is coming kind of slow. So how do we deal with that? Uh, the ministry staff, the citizens are just sitting around, you know, uh, bills, emails, and stuff like that. I think we even got to the certified level, uh, point thus far, uh, to remind them that there is a fee to be paid for, you know, doing business in the city. Most likely, they're probably not used to that, because a lot of the businesses that I run into, they haven't been walked in since, you know, 2014, the latest ones I saw. So not just Bashfulman County, but that just wasn't their priority, uh, apparently back then. And it might be new to them, but what we're seeing right now is that we're gonna have to get stickers, or gonna put it on, on, in front of their doors, and they need to contact the fire marshal's office, you know, to have, you know, business to handle. And, uh, there are steps per, you know, the fire code that, uh, in a timely manner, if that's not, you know, respected, then the business can be put, put out. It can be locked up, with chain of doors. And, uh, that's, that's just all part of doing business. But that's where we're at right now in a lot of these places. And the same thing, it's an educational thing. They might not be used to doing it, but, uh, the phones are wide open, the emails are wide open. Uh, some people call and, and, you know, request how to do things the right way. Some people don't. So for those businesses that are not complying right now, that's where we about to go. So I'm saying 14 million days after you get a notification, after that, lock and change. You come talk to me about it, and we can get it, get it straightened out.
Is it possible to get a copy of that paper you showed?
Yes, the process? Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, and you do walk, yeah, you, you kind of walking through, because it does, it just look at that to you like it's kind of a lot of following and stuff, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, you're the best with that.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. Let's pretty much check some balances, because mind you, the fire code is legal and bonded. So if we want to make sure, we don't miss any important processes. Um, there's some businesses now, you know, we'll discuss later on, um, they missed some of those key components, and that, that stalls out the process. Besides getting bad information, that slows it down. And not to go on, on business here, we want a good, solid, safe business.
What do they ask, like, uh, if I don't do this, what's gonna happen? I mean, are they receptive to what you're saying about the cahoots and whatever?
Yes, and like I said, it goes back to the education part. They just didn't know. It's always, well, I was in Houston, and Houston did this, well, Fort Smith County said that. No, this, this, this is different. And we're not doing something that's just one way. The same is just that Houston is a little bit more lax in certain things. Fort Smith County, they're on the staff. They don't have enough manpower to put into this project, so stuff is overlooked. You know, that, that word that somebody made up along the way, that it doesn't exist. Rampage organization does not exist. You know, I mean, you build a building, there's a code, there's adopted, and we go by that code. I mean, it's just that simple. But, uh, it's not an, our first thing, education first. Because if you don't know, that's, that's what we're here for, to explain the process to you, so you can understand. A process to have a successful business. Now, absolutely, we'll get copies of that, and, uh, any questions that you might have. The business owner will get a actual sit-down and discussion with that from the staff about the processes, though. But for the most part, everything, everybody's been very receptive, uh, to the process, because they understand now, and the education component is there.
Fire Chief, can we have those copies tonight, so we can straighten them out?
Are you still?
Go ahead, ma'am, sir.
Are you still contracting your services to the city? Or you work full-time for the city?
I'm a part-time employee.
You're an employee now, so you don't bill us, you're not selling us bills, you're not billing us for inspections and stuff like that?
No, no, my contract services, when you brought me on, I was on the contract. I don't do it anymore. I'm part-time.
That come by the council? Was that approved by the council?
I hope it was. Yes, it was. It was approved by the council.
I'd like to know that.
Employee, you're gonna have to be approved by council.
No, I'm just saying, I mean, you brought in for one reason, and now we made employee out of you. Also, we made a supervisor out of you. I don't know how you be a part-time supervisor on full-time workers.
Well, I don't think we.
I mean, you're supervisor by C sergeant.
Yes, I am.
Okay.
How are you qualified in saying this?
I'm not, I'm not.
And saying this, you.
I'm not worse than your qualifications. I'm not worse than your qualifications.
By doing dual positions, I'm the fire marshal, I'm the Assistant Emergency Management Coordinator, and I'm a patrol sergeant. That's a huge statement to the city.
But you said you were part-time.
When you brought me, when you.
Okay, 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 Councilmember, Councilmember. And, and, and.
Oh, 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 I'm telling you this question.
Hold on, hold on, wait a minute. We not gonna be doing this, okay?
We're not.
No, we not. That's why I asked the question.
Councilmember Burton?
You brought me on, and you.
I asked the question.
You have, you got an issue.
That's why I asked the question.
You, you, you brought me on.
Okay, okay. Uh, we done with that. We're moving on to the next.
That's why I asked the question.
We're moving on to the next issue, okay?
That's why I asked the question. Thanks. Any other questions?
And Councilmember, let me assure you, I, I should have read the, uh, decorum, uh, ordinance upfront. Uh, we, we, we don't need all the, the back and forth and argumentativeness and stuff, Mr. Burton. If you ask a question, okay, you got it, but y'all, y'all can't be doing all of this back and forth. This is, we're here to conduct city business.
Well, I'm glad you said y'all.
Okay.
Because it wasn't just me. I'm glad you said that.
And we are not conducting third-grade class, okay? So we know how to give a vote, and not conduct ourselves, and we're gonna move forward. Let's move forward on the next item. Thank you, Chief.
Okay, also, thank you.
Agenda item four, C, Police Department update, Police Chief Carr Bryant.
Chief, and before you get started, I understand there's been lots of comments and stuff about PD and all that stuff. We will not have the same exchange during this next section. Chief, can you give a report? If you have questions, ask it respectfully, and we're not being argumentative upon it. We move forward.
Good evening, Councilwoman, Mayor.
Good evening.
I want to address, um, I want to give you an update on the Police Department. Address, address some information that has been put out about the Police Department that's not true. Um, it causes concern of safety of my officers, and I just want to address those things along with giving you an updated report. Um, so back on July 22nd, Councilmember Burton posted on his page that he was driving over the city for two hours, and he did not see the police. Um, that is not, that is not true. As you can see from our six-month of activity, we have had over 12,976, a total of 12,976 calls. Um, of that, we have 1,220 citations that have been issued, 802 warnings. We, um, conducted 167 accident investigations. We had over 10,000 calls for service. The exact number is 10,735. We had 19 arrests, and we had 33 other agency assists. Um, just because you don't see an officer within a certain amount of time, we are growing as a city, and our officers are answering more calls than they have had to in the past. So they are out here working, they're out here patrolling, they're out here doing the things that they need to do to make sure everyone in the city of Arcola is safe, including visitors that pass through this city. Um, when I was appointed in 2022, my goal was to make this Police Department one of the most exceptional Police Departments in the state of Texas. I wanted to rebrand the department because we had a bad reputation. And I did not want to continue that when, um, up under my leadership. So, um, someone anonymously posted that, I, Chief Carr, why haven't you turned the evidence on the shooting that happened on North Pine to the county? And it says, oh, because you were in a relationship at the time of the shooting. Um, not true. As you can see from the next slide, this incident happened on July, um, 23rd, 2023. Um, some of the information that you will see has been redacted. Um, on the 11th of October, we submitted the evidence to the DPS, uh, lab for submission. You will see the lab submission form right there. Um, you will see that this case was actually submitted to the VA's office. You'll see the VA stamp, um, October 27th of 2023. So the allegation of me not submitting information to the VA is incorrect. Um, one of the things I pride myself on is being transparent and my integrity. And I don't go after people just because, that's not the type of person I am. So when this post came from Mr. Burton on August 1st that says, "Arcola, would you believe that this chief pressed charges against an ex-officer over a police shirt when a phone call and asking where is the shirt would have been all she needed to do?" She tries so hard to hurt the young men and women careers. Wow, wow, really. The officer that Mr. Burton is, um, talking about in this hall was actually terminated in December of 2024. Um, on May 12th of 2025, as you'll see on the screen, I received an email from Off Duty Services. Off Duty Services is a company that provides, um, police extra employment to officers. Um, as you can see in the email, it says, "Your Chief Carr, as part of our regular compliance verification program, we respectfully request confirmation that the following personnel are current active law enforcement officers with the Arcola Police Department, not presently on any form of leave, administrative, disciplinary, or medical, otherwise. They are authorized by your agency to carry a firearm while off-duty and authorized to work armed off-duty security assignments for off-duty services." As you can see, this officer's name is listed at the bottom. So I knew in May of 2025, this officer was no longer a Arcola Police Department officer. Um, I asked for his work history from that, um, agency, and as you can see, he was terminated December 10th. He worked extra employment for this agency from December 13th, 2024, all the way up until May 5th of 2025, um, which is against the law, and I will get to that. Upon my investigation, I saw that this officer was at this pla, at the place of employment in our Arcola Police Department uniform. He had also signed his name on the sign, and she, and it's blacked out a lot, and you can barely see it, um, at this place of employment for two, for two days. He was also sent, um, an email requesting the uniforms back, the uniform shirt back. In that email, he, um, told me initially that he had submitted, turned in all his uniforms and equipment to the center regimen, and he doesn't know what happened after that. Um, so, um, I told him that we were missing a uniform. He says, what uniform are we missing? So I sent him the picture, and I said, the uniform you're wearing in this picture. A, after that, on May 23rd, 2025, he sends me an email that says, "Afternoon, the shirt will be returned on today." So he is now admitting that he has the shirt. This is him walking to our police lobby, returning the shirt. I have the shirt right here that I brought in to show that he did return the shirt with his name, and it was our uniform shirt. T-CO, which is the Texas Commission on Law Enforcement, who governs all police agencies in the state of Texas, has rules set. And in their rules, it says, "In Texas, a peace officer's license is not active unless it is held by a law enforcement agency." Furthermore, a peace officer's license is automatically deactivated upon termination from that agency. When a peace officer is terminated from their agency, their license is automatically deactivated, which means they are no longer authorized to act as a peace officer. State law, which is Texas Penal Code 37.11, impersonating a public servant states, "A person commits an offense if this person impersonates a public servant with intent to induce another to submit to a person's pretended official authority or to rely on a person's pretended official acts, or knowingly perpetuates to exercise without legal authority any function of a public servant or of a public office, including that of a judge in court. An offense under this section is a felony of the third degree." So yes, I did take action on this individual because he committed a felony. It was not a simple misdemeanor. It was not simple, yes, come turn in your shirt because you worked several times. You received payment in working as a police officer when you were not authorized to do that. So some of our upcoming, um, community outreach, we have National Night Out, our senior Thanksgiving luncheon, and we're gonna do something for Christmas. We just don't know yet what we're gonna do, but we'll have that coming up. I bring up community service because we are out in the community a lot. Um, this past Sunday, I spoke at a church, um, for, uh, they asked me to come speak to the kids about law enforcement and back to school, and how they should act in doing the right thing. So Mr. Burton's friend, Roger White, posted, "The police are not seen around Arcola like they should be, but they can take an unmarked suburban police car to move Texas to the church house." Chief Carr, was that you unofficially? Chief Carr, was that you on official business? Are you taking advantage of having an unmarked company car?" First of all, I had my family with me, and I was not in the city of Arcola's police vehicle at the time. Was I on official business? Yes, I was representing the city of Arcola and Arcola Police Department in a positive manner to the community. I don't know if they had somebody follow me to boot Texas, eh, really, I don't care. Y'all could, you can follow me to Crab Texas, 'cause I'll be there this Sunday with my daughter, Mommy. So it, that, that doesn't bother me, but it's just a simple fact of the untruths that are continually to be put out about this Police Department. We do a lot in the community. We do heavy trash pickup, we go to the schools and talk, we have talked at the Fort Bend County District Attorney's Office to those kids, so we are always out and about in the community. And we like to see things positive, we don't like the negative. And every time there is something negative put out about this Police Department, while I'm here and it's under my leadership, I will correct it. And that's the end of my.
This officer that you did that analysis of, was his name Julius, Julius?
Julius.
Julius. Uh, how long have you, have you worked for the city?
Maybe six months, I'm not sure.
And you got it?
I did.
Did you do a thorough background check on him? He was a, don't change spots, if you did all that somewhere else.
Well, he did not do it prior, it was not in his.
So he had a clean bill?
Okay, did you do a proper background check?
That's all I asked him, that's all I asked him. 'Cause I don't know him.
Oh, we've already done the permit process. And that, whatever permit process?
That was a fire marshal.
Okay, okay. Next, we'll have agenda item four B, permit process, Police Chief Carr Bryant.
So I've been tasked with going over this process. Permits and fire marshal work hand in hand. And so Marquise and Rebecca have been working hand in hand, um, to get this process going and to, um, assure that everybody is treated fairly and that everybody knows what the process is. Um, so on residential, uh, the residential process, um, how it begins is the applicant will submit an application for a water sewer check. And after that, if it's, yes, they have water sewer available, they will then submit for their water sewer tap and pay those fees to MOC. After that, they, they will submit their land survey, field dirt application, and their site plan for review and pay those fees. It then goes, sent off, it's sent off to staff to review. Once it comes back, the comments are sent back. If they are, no revisions are needed, they move on in the process. If revisions are needed, they have to submit those revisions back to staff so they can be corrected. Um, they cannot move on in the process until they actually get approval, um, of their site plan and their, and their field dirt. So then, um, if there are no revisions needed, they're gonna submit for their building, uh, permit application. Once those plans are approved, the field dirt permit and the building permit, they can start their building process. They will then have, um, inspections. Of course, they have field dirt inspections. Once they start construction on their home, they have inspections that have to be completed. And then they will submit, um, after the building permit, they submit their mechanical, electrical, and plumbing permits, and the contractors have to submit those. They go through those, uh, permit, um, process where they review it. And once it's approved, they, um, go through, they can do the work, and then they get the inspections. Once they get this final inspection and everything is complete, they receive a certificate of completion. That's on a residential bill. So that's how the process works.
Is that charged for each?
So there, there are fees for, there's a site plan review fee, there's a, um, application fee, there's a building permit fee, and there are fees for the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing permits that they have to pay, and of course, water and sewers have fees. So yes.
But these, these are not fees that are, um, that are just something that City of Arcola does? This is something that, that's something that's done all across?
All across. We've looked at, yeah, we looked at several cities and looked at their process and their fees. And City of Arcola is right in line with everybody else. Okay, so the commercial multifamily and townhome is pretty much the same. The only difference with them is we require a pre-development meeting, and Fire Marshal spoke a little bit about that, a pre-development meeting before they start any process. And that is to understand what they want to bring into the city, what it, and for them to understand what they're gonna need. If they need to re-plant, if they need, um, whatever they need to have, that is gonna all be discussed in that meeting. Um, so they do a pre-development meeting, and then they go through the same process. The only difference with, uh, commercial bills is the Fire Marshal is engaged in those. The Fire Marshal is engaged in those, so that, that's the only difference, but the process is the same.
Agenda item four E, City Engineer Report, Mr. Laris Tarnapalooza in.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, ladies.
Uh, you have my report in front of you. Uh, what I'm going to do first is just kind of go over what projects are under construction. Then the other section is projects that are under design. Talking about, uh, projects that are under construction, first one is the Arcola Water Plant Expansion, which is going on next door. Uh, Mr. Contractor have all this materials in, and that project is underway. Uh, and that project is scheduled to be completed around the first quarter of twenty-twenty-six. That's for the Arcola Water Plant Expansion. Uh, the next project you see on the list is the, uh, wastewater treatment plant expansion. It's a four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand gallon expansion. It's pretty much the same item that's been on the agenda. Uh, we're continuing to see construction move forward over there. Had an issue, a notice to proceed, uh, issued to them, uh, in June, and so it's just, that's a big project. That's not a small project. That's a project that's for freshwater supply district one, they're totally funding, but it's our plant, so we get to manage it, watch it, make sure everything's going well. Things are going well right now, it's still early in it, in the process, but it's moving forward. Uh, the sanitary sewer evaluation and rehab, uh, that's, and we actually got our first bill from them, them being the contractor that, uh, monitors the, the flow monitoring. And all of that is still part of our SSO that we're in. Uh, there's really nothing going on with that, other than we're monitoring and trying to find out where leaks are in our system. Uh, the next one is the Arcola Drainage Improvements. Uh, and that's a citywide, I'm just calling it a citywide drainage improvements, where we're basically cleaning drainage ditches. Uh, we also have our survey crews going out, trying to establish which culverts are gonna need to be replaced. That's gonna have to be a separate item, because that's a big ticket item right there. We're not trying to replace, we're not gonna try to replace every culvert, uh, that's within the road right of ways. What we're trying to look at, and with those elevations, is where do we have those culverts that are a half a foot too high? If it's a ten to two, you keep moving. It's the ones that are half a foot, a foot, and now that's, that's a lot of water. So we gotta figure out what's going on as it relates to that thing right there. Last item under construction is the sanitary sewer liftation rehabilitation number three in the North Pine sanitary sewer. Uh, that's, that's over there on, uh, North Pine. Uh, first thing that'll happen, they're gonna start working on the, uh, liftation, and then they'll come back and do the, uh, replacement of four and fifty linear feet of twelve-inch sanitary sewer. That's one that Charles awarded last month, I believe, last month, it, it was recently issued. Uh, those are all the construction projects. As far as the engineering, design projects, uh, right now, I actually did get an email, uh, this week from TCEQ, uh, and basically I even clicked it in there and put it in there. Uh, the TCEQ permit modeler just responded that his work is done and that he has sent it off to the permit writer. Uh, and he will provide the name, and when, when he gets it assigned. So we're getting, we're, we're almost there. So basically, all the technical portion's done, but they have to write the permit up for this ultimate expansion. And remember, this is for the four-point-one. Uh, and once this expansion's done, this is as big as this plant can be. It, it can't be any bigger, it, this is as big as it's gonna get right there. Uh, and so we just said, "Let's get the ultimate," so we don't have to go back, uh, to them on that. The next item after that is the relocation of infrastructure within five-twenty-one, because five-twenty-one is getting widened from Highway Six down to our city limit line. We have to relocate those utilities. Uh, and that's, again, that conversation I always have with you and every other city that we've ever had to talk to. That's why I make them flat, that's why I make them put easements there, so we can put that infrastructure in that easement. Whenever we put it in text out road right of way, it's not that it's not done, it's done all the time. But when you put it in the road right of way, when they do these widening, you, the owner of that infrastructure, have to pay for the relocation. It's just part of the game. And, and again, it's not like anybody did anything wrong or anything. I can promise you, in, any city in the United States have utilities in there. It's about when they relocate, that's when it becomes a problem. But when we have an easement, no matter when it's got and who's got something going on, they're responsible for adjustments.
Can you have started, go ahead. Like I saw him out there moving some of the.
So on, on the south section?
Yeah.
Yes, they are doing, and that, it's not so much text out, it's all the different infrastructure that's in there. You're right, Serpoin, uh, Frontier, uh, Gas, all of that's gotta be removed before construction can start. And so that's why we're, we're dragging up the rear, but we're dragging them up, and we're gonna hit them hard with our relocation of our utilities. And the main area that we have utilities that's gotta be relocated is over there by the railroad, because you're gonna have it overpassed. So all of the stopping and waiting for the train to come by, you won't have to do that when it's ultimately done. Now, it's not gonna happen next year. It is not gonna happen next year, so don't think, and Laris is gonna tell you it's not. It's gonna be two or three years from now when that is gonna happen. But when it happens, and it's paying, it's growing pains. It's tough when, whenever anybody does any construction, even when we do public construction. It's tough going through the process, but it's worth it in the end, I just tell them to hold on for the ride. The last item I have from my update is the Arcola wastewater treatment plant that we're doing the des- the design that's four-hundred-thousand gallons, which is gonna take the plant from one-point-four to one-point-eight. So our plant's gonna always stand in construction probably for the next three years, because as soon as they finish telling us, it's just gonna roll on and keep on going with that next expansion. Other than that, that concludes my report. I'll entertain any questions anyone have of me as it relates to my report, or any matter that the attorney will allow me to speak on. It's gotta be in my report, but I'll tie to it.
Good question.
All right?
On the five-twenty-one roadway expansion, um, there were some properties that had to be condemned to be able to get the easement, um, for moving those utilities.
Yes, sir.
To that easement.
Yes, sir.
Could you tell us the status of it?
No, I can't.
Okay.
I'm not the use, I'm not the right-of-way guy. I just, I just told them what they need, where they need to be, and, uh, you know, normally they have those answers, but I'm not they guy today. I'm sorry. Anything else? Thank y'all very much.
Moving to. Moving to agenda item four F, State of the City, Mayor B. W. Williams.
Uh, yes, just on, kind of, that basis of some of the thing that we're doing up here at the City Hall and that's going on. Um, I would say, as you see parking lot, at least you can drive line with up, you know, parent, the front end out there now. Fort Bend County, uh, road and bridge came out and did parking lot for us. We were gonna get a, like a four or six inch, uh, pavement, a, uh, asphalt pavement out there in the, uh, parking lot, but what they ended up doing was just doing like a two-inch overlay for right now, because Fort Bend County is gonna come through and redo all of that out there with concrete parking lot. And so we didn't wanna expend that type of money, you know, any money on that, so we thought we were gonna have to pay forty thousand dollars to get the parking lot done, but we were able to get it, and we didn't have to pay anything for that. And so we really appreciate them coming out and doing, doing that for us, so. So that was, that, that's staying here, and like I said, it's just temporary. Come through and do the concrete parking lot. It was also tying with parking that will be for the community center that's gonna go, go in over right next door. Uh, also the wellness park. We, uh, we sat down with the engineer and the designer to, uh, do the final stages of our design for the wellness park, which will be right over here at five-twenty-one where the food trucks are. Well, with a, no food trucks right there, it's coffee shop, a coffee, uh, trailer, and also snow cone trailer. But what we're gonna do is expand that, it's gonna be, it's gonna have food trucks there, it's gonna have, uh, nice eating places where you can sit covered eating spot. We're gonna have some, uh, a reflective garden over there. We're gonna have, uh, outdoor exercise way where we have a walking trail. We're gonna have community garden over there. So we would have been, we're gonna finalize, we're finalizing our plans for that. Uh, the engineer is involved with us on that, and I'm really looking forward to that. I, I told him I wanted to have a, a Christmas present to the city, uh, to have it done, but, you know, that's my desire. Of course, I wanted to have it done last year, twenty-one-four, but, uh, just sometimes it takes a little time, so that is coming, and I'm really looking forward to that. We had a dinner dialogue town hall up here to talk to residents about, uh, concerns that they may have had regarding the COs and, and, uh, the certificates of obligation, the funds we got for, uh, doing some capital improvement projects in the city. Some people say, "Well, you know, they see that we're doing cleaning ditches, and they, they wanna make sure that we get their ditches." Right now, Texas Drainage is doing some work for text out, so they, they'll, they'll be back to the city, and those, those areas that are, we identified as needing, uh, ditch cleaning, we'll be back over there to complete some of that work. I don't wanna mess with too much of the area where we haven't had problems with flooding, because sometimes if you go in there and mess with something that's not broken, you might create some issues. So we're, right now, we're just doing those areas where we had some significant issues. And also, I know some of the things that people talked about were the sewer. And we'll talk about that a little bit later in, in here, but that was something that came up also, the sewer connection. And at this time, we, we, you know, announced on several occasions, we don't have sewer connections, to provide to the residents or commercial, anybody else at this time in the city of Arcola. However, we are looking at alternatives for our residents, and so I just want you to know, we'll talk about that a little bit later on the agenda. But we, we want, if you have property in the city and you want to develop it, we want to help you to be able to do that. So we are seeking alternatives, uh, to help in that, in that capacity. So, uh, just know that we hear you, and we understand. Unfortunately, I can't make, I've been, I've tried to turn the engineer over there upside down and shake some connections out of them, but there are just none at this time, so, uh, we are working on it. And also, we just had, we just had a nice dinner and just, you know, being able to sit down and, yeah, to, to, to engage with the community. We try to do community engagement events all the time, and so I just want y'all to know we are gonna continue to do those things. We got, in October, our cultural fest, we'll be doing that again this year. And so, uh, just throw any opportunities that we have to the community, we will. We had a community, uh, movie night out here, there's like a drive-in movie, and some people bought out lawn chairs and stuff, and so we'll continue to do those things, and hopefully we'll make sure that everybody is notified. Gonna give you an update on AAA. Any of you all know that there's a, um, there's a commercial storage unit, uh, commercial zone on South Pine at five-twenty-one. And what we noticed is that even though that, that project received a permit from the City of Arcola, the drainage was not adequate, their plans were not adequate, and it was causing problems, uh, with the neighboring, the resident that lived, that stayed right behind that project. One thing about it is, we are not anti-business. I know it might be, you know, people may say that, we are. One thing about it is, we are not anti-business. I know it might be, you know, people may say that. We are not anti-business. We have had to put stop work orders on some, on some businesses that are trying to do business in the city because their plans, if it causes problem or negative impact on our existing residents, we will not allow them to develop until they modify and fix those plans. Uh, this resident on South Pine was being inundated with water that was pouring from that particular, um, uh, commercial development. The good thing about it is that they were willing to work with us. When we told them to stop and that we weren't gonna allow them to do any more work until they mitigated that, those problems, they came to the table and wanted to work with us. When, when developments and business want to work with us so that we don't cause harm to our residents, we will work with them. And we want business in the city, but we want good business that is going to benefit our residents and not create harm for our residents. So, uh, that's, that's what I'm saying. And there's a number, like I said, there are a couple of other, uh, properties that are having that same problem, but as soon as they come to the table and willing to, to make those changes, then we'll move forward. And so again, uh, we're looking forward to any new commercial business. Uh, at this point, we can't bring them in because we don't have, not have the sewer to, to give to them, but we are working on that as well. Last thing I'll say is that any of you all that have kids or whatever are going back to school, we received, um, some backpacks and some school supplies and stuff today, so anybody who's still in need of those, we got like six boxes and I think each one of them have ten packs in there. So if anybody needs, uh, any school supplies and stuff like that, we have some available tonight. So, that's all that I have right now.
Yes, Mayor, I wanna ask you, okay, like on the wellness, will they have like, um, if you need to get, uh, your shots or whatever you call it, uh, immunization, will we open like a little place? Like get a nurse or whatever to come out and then do shots?
With the mobile thing?
Yeah, the little mobile. Yeah, that would be nice.
We can have that, anything dealing with wellness. I mean, we were looking at stuff from yoga to, people have talked about line dancing. We can have live music events out there. Anything that deals with wellness, with movement, with exercise, with whatever, uh, cooking demonstration, healthy cooking demonstration and stuff like that. We are open to those ideas and we have the space to do it and that's the kind of thing that we will be doing in that space. So, yes.
Thank you.
Alright, I'm done.
Agenda item five, regular agenda items. These agenda items are up for discussion, consideration and possible action. Agenda item five A, to approve the July twenty twenty-five municipal operations and consulting, um, M O C report, Mr. Roland Leal.
Good evening, Mayor, Council and Residents. Um, y'all should have a copy of your July operators report in front of you. So we're looking at July twenty-five. Um, water connections are a total of one thousand and ten connections. At sewer connections, we have a total of one thousand nine hundred and twenty-four. Out of those, five hundred and seventy-eight are freshwater one sewer connections. And then another hundred and ten are freshwater and city of Arcola agreement sewer only, which puts freshwater at a total of six hundred and eighty-eight. Just to the left below, we're looking at your water well. Your well produced six million and seventy-six thousand gallons. We billed five million seven hundred and twenty-five thousand gallons, which put us at a ninety-four percent accounted for. I will hold on to July delinquents until we get to presentation B and I'll go back over that. Um, but just below, we're looking at your revenue total, which is a total of a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars, a hundred and sixteen with sixty-four cents. Just below, your wastewater treatment plant is operating at fifty-seven permitted capacity. It has been sampled and in good shape and in complete. If you turn your page. We're looking at your wastewater treatment plant. You'll see some things highlighted in yellow. Once again, um, that's your, first one is your total gallons per day at the sewer plant for the city of Arcola. Then you'll see, um, your final residual. And then to the far right, you'll see the gallons from freshwater one. Just below, your daily average flow is at nine hundred and fifty thousand gallons. And your total rainfall for the month, this billing period was five inches point ten. If you turn your page, we're looking at your D M R. This is what is sampled by T C Q when they go to your wastewater treatment plant. I always highlight the coli because this is what can cause, um, us illness. And we were at that one point oh, well below the threshold, which we were okay. If you turn your page, you don't see this much, but we are asking approval for a delinquent account to be cut off for a total of seventy-seven dollars and fifty-five cents for a return payment. And that's all I have for y'all unless y'all have a question on the operators report.
So, I, we, we didn't hear, we, we considered, um, that page. Void tool for, uh, cutoff at seventy-seven dollars?
Yes.
I, I think though, I think there's something, I, I, and I don't counsel y'all in that we might wanna discuss some of, some of that, you know. I mean, I think, hmm, cutting somebody off for seventy-seven dollars, you know, that, maybe give them an opportunity to tell. Give them an opportunity to pay. And, and listen, this is something I know, you, you, you're trying to stay within the guidelines of what was set and I understand that, but, Counselor, let me just say, I think that's something that we all, we need to discuss, perhaps on this next item or.
Yeah, so I can, for this account, um, if y'all choose not to approve it, then I'll hold on it. Um, and then you can give me whatever y'all want me to do. We can reach out once again to this customer and tell him, hey, y'all have this, this is what we wanna do.
Seventy-seven dollars, how many months is that probably worth?
So, uh, when we're, when we're looking at this, usually a, um, when they do this, so keep in mind the seventy-seven dollars is that, but there are in your, in your rate where there are fees included because when that gets returned, there's a fee that the bank's gonna charge on that, so it's the seventy-seven and then once we do reach out, it's gonna be more. But this customer was probably in, in, um, she was probably on current, not behind. Um, so, but that's how it said on the rate that y'all, once this customer has a return check, that we'll proceed with the cutoff until they make that.
That's what it was.
Yeah.
Girl, can I ask you a question? Okay, on the taps. I didn't know that you could put two taps in one little round cap.
You mean the, um, meters?
Yeah, the little meters. I didn't know you could put two, two in there till my water pipe burst and then the people behind me. They said that they were burst also. So, why, I mean, if we paid different money, I mean, you know what I'm saying? I had to pay.
So how, how?
So I'm not, I'm not under.
Yeah, so how, how it's tapped to the main is to be more efficient instead of having all these service lines going. If usually if there's two, if there's an neighbor here and a neighbor here, they're gonna put a service line to the main in between and then a U branch that comes out. So a U branch is gonna come, it looks like a U. And then you have a meter here and a meter here. That doesn't, so whatever's going on past that meter to your house, that has no effect on that other customer. Y'all both have curb stops, so we can shut off one meter, leave the other one active.
They said they did though, 'cause mine burst and we paid to have it, to have it done. And they also said that they had a problem at, at their house, so there's two different hookups. I, I'm confused.
Let, let, let's, let's discuss with that with him quietly because.
Yes, I think, I think you.
Okay, yeah.
So.
Thank you.
No problem. That's all I have on, if y'all have anything else.
So if we, you know, if, if approving this report, y'all deals with approving that, let's, maybe do the modify for the approval here, uh, minus that cutoff right now. If that is so what the council chooses to do, but seventy-seven dollars, people might be considering.
I make a motion and we approve the report minus the correction that needs to be made on the seventy-seven dollars cut off.
Motion has been made by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember Bevy to modify the approval of the report to reflect no cutoff on seventy-seven dollars. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So the motion's passed.
Agenda item five B, uh, discussion, consideration, possible action on delinquing M O C sewer, Councilman Mr. Roland Leal.
Okay, um, Council Mayor, um, what I did was I brought up three additional papers, um, two that will be stapled and one extra. So what, so just to give you an idea, um, what you're seeing there is what we see at M O C as far as how we see the, the customers when they are late. So I kinda wanted to give you an idea of what we are seeing. Um, the water, it's self-explanatory, so I'm, I'm not gonna, and, and this is not the issue at hand, so, but just to give you, this was updated. So there are seventy-four accounts that are delinquent, um, at this moment on that. Um, what I am gonna refer to is a sewer only. This are, are account, these are accounts that only have sewer. Um, and these are somewhere included with in-city and out-of-city. I did speak with the mayor earlier today, I, I, so what I am asking for is guidance because when, when we're looking at this, you can see things two ways. This, what you're seeing here on this is the rate order that is in, approved by the city of Arcola. But there is also out there where at a hundred dollars, y'all want to, um, shut off. That's when we start the process of shutting off these people. But in saying that, as I, as I spoke to earlier, where I'm, where I'm needing the guidance is, in your rate order, it says after two months. So we at M O C will stick to what the rate order says. There is, the hundred dollars is not in the rate order. But if we do adhere to the hundred, it would probably be best that we add it so we can go by it. But at the same time, I do want you to understand that there is the rate of pay that these customers are paying. Um, at, so in saying that, some of these twenty-dollar accounts are gonna, they can go five months before they hit a hundred. So in your rate order, it says two months. And that's two months late, not one. And then some of these accounts are hitting a hundred, just being late one month and then still have their current bill. So that puts it over a hundred, but we, we're said to do it at two months, so.
I have a better idea. Instead of doing it by a dollar amount, you do it by the number of months they're delinquent. So if somebody is, let's say, three months behind, then they should be considered for cutoff.
Okay.
But, man, that way you don't have to worry about, you know, some people have twenty dollar a month and some people have fifty dollar a month. Some people have seventy-five dollar a month. So if you just do it by the number of months that they have not paid their bill.
Okay.
The, 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 let me say, the problem that you're running into with that, if you got a person who's eighty dollars behind, so they, they're four months behind maybe on twenty dollar a month. It's gonna cost eight hundred and some dollars to go and cap that thing off.
Yes.
And then hopefully we can get it back. If they can't pay sixty dollars, that, that, eighty dollars, how do you do it? But at the same time, we do need to have something that aligns. We, we can't have one thing in our order and another thing. And so, so I get what you're saying, have it capped at a certain month, but, uh, we just gotta, I think, again, this is something where I think we have to kind of go back to the, the.
And we, and we don't, one of the things that we've found in the past is, uh, you know, you don't have to sit there and do every single one. I mean, if you sit there and warn people that this is what it's gonna cost if you want your sewer reconnected and you threaten them with it, 'cause we're telling you, you know, we're gonna come out with a backhoe and we're gonna dig up your line and we're gonna put in an Elder valve and we're gonna plug the line. And if you want your sewer again, it's gonna cost all these fees.
So, and, and if you notice, if you notice on the same, on the rate, it says that there is no fee for the letter. So what we do is, we send out a letter, which it doesn't, there's no cost to the, to the district. We send that. Um, it was, y'all, y'all had put to, to not do door tax, um, so we just send a letter. In that letter, it will explain what they're requiring and it will explain all the costs associated with if it is goes to where we have to disconnect them. Um, but as you can see, um, some of these accounts, whether they're getting the letter, they're not responding to that.
In past, we, we, you know, this thing used to be four, five pages of it. And it ain't gonna do nothing but grow.
Yes.
It's only gonna grow.
Yeah.
And that's just on the sewer side. That's on the water side. And I guess everywhere but Arcola, you can get away with falling behind four, five months, three, four months, two, three months, whatever the case may be. And for the city to make, uh, reservations behind sixty, seventy dollars. I mean, spend sixty dollars filling up the gas tank and stuff, this kind of stuff, you know. We put it in M O Cs and we say, y'all do your job. This list got down, like we ended up down by twelve, but now it's sitting grown back out of, out of whack. And it ain't gonna do nothing but grow.
Yes, and I, and I.
Because word gonna, words, people gonna pass the word if you get, get behind two months. They ain't gonna cut you off. You can go further. And they're just gonna grow like waffa, once you have it.
Okay, so in saying that, um, I can't speak on how it was before. I can speak on how we were approaching it. And if it were, if, if you want us to go by what it says, we would approach it after the two months, we'll go cut. But then again, like the mayor said, you're looking at those where you look on this thing, if you're looking, it says cutoff sewer. You'll see that fee at eight hundred twenty-five for a plug, three hundred fifty for the cutoff. And you're looking for additional hundred fifty, um, deposit. That's what, that's what M O C, because this is what's written, that's what M O C. So that now, six, that two months or four year, whatever, is going to cost them essentially that much.
Okay, on the bill that is sent out, is there any way to put, like red, letting them see that this will, will happen if you don't pay this small amount, it's gonna get huge. And if you can't afford the small, you certainly won't be able to afford the big one. So maybe put it in a red down there to, most time red catch your attention. You might read it. So, give them a, a minute to see.
And do, and, and what you're seeing here is what they're seeing. So they're getting their, their rears as the total, um, what is current, and then they're gonna read, I mean, that's gonna be in there, what their potential. But to what, um, Mr. Burton said, that yes, if you don't do it, it becomes to where they're not gonna do it. And then it, it can grow, so, um, I guess that's where I'm asking, how y'all want to approach, maybe something y'all need to.
I, I, I would like to, I would like to, Councilboard, I would like to reassess how we're gonna do this, 'cause I, I'm not, you know. This is a new administration and I'm not comfortable returning, some, cutting somebody off for forty dollars and then have to pay twelve hundred, fourteen hundred dollars to get it connected back. That, that's not good, that's, that's not good business on our part because if they don't pay.
We got too much.
Where you can cash.
Yes.
But, and then again, I think that after, after we've done some due diligence and, and informed them, you know, a couple of times that, listen, you're gonna be cut off if, then at that point, I think we can. So I, I think the council has to just come together and decide.
Why did we not say, uh, tags, door tags? What, are we, that over from the door?
I, I don't know about that.
Oh, oh. Well, most of the time, that's what in the city they put, okay? And what it gets your attention, you go in your home.
On most, on all.
And we may consider having to do that. So that's, I think, I think that's another thing that we have to, maybe so can I get a, um, maybe if I can entertain a motion to table that until we can give a chance to assess that. But if, if that's what council sort of chooses to do, that's what I'd like to do.
It's just been a thousand dollars, but forty dollars, eighty dollars. We're spending money and they still haven't paid it, so why would we be spending a thousand dollars?
Yeah, but at some point we do.
Yeah, we're gonna do it eventually, but not, not unless it happens.
Roland, I have a question. Is the notification also in Spanish?
Um, I can find out that, but most of the time it is, most of our notifications will be in English and in Spanish.
Yeah.
And the last thing I will tell you is that the, the one key thing that when we note about disconnecting this is, which we have found, is when we see a customer with more than one tap, or one, more than one home for one tap. So that, we will take an aggressive approach and reach out to the mayor and y'all about that because that's, um, caused, that can cause potential issues with T C Q in our. So that, we will take an aggressive approach and reach out to the mayor and y'all about that, because that's caused, that can cause potential issues with TCDQ in our tap count.
Roland, I'm looking at this board, and I see one for six thousand, one for five thousand.
So, no, no, and we did talk about this too as well, so those are, um.
So that's on the agenda, I think, to monitor.
Yeah, account forty-one, that is Fort Ben ISD School. They just opened up, this is the new school, they just opened up, they did pay their, they have not paid their, their bill yet. On the twentieth of this month, they will be two months behind. The other one, the other one that you referred to is Circle, Circle G Cap Fish Farm. This has been brought up to, to the mayor, and I think we had a leak, we're holding on that until, till we have further, um, done and so on that. But that's a deal that where their meter, where their meter is, they don't really see it, and it, and it ran, but we did shut that one.
Yeah, so if y'all, if y'all were mine, if y'all would, be in favor of that.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to table this until council, they come to some kind of agreement, of what we, after that schedule, what we need to do, then we'll come back.
Motion has been made by the company, the council, and the deputy, all in favor, uh, opposed, I would like to table this.
Agenda item five C, the financial report for June twenty-twenty-five, Dr. Annette Goldberg, City Administrator.
Mayor and council, I gave you a high-level investigation workshop, so I will give it to you again. I'm gonna give you year-to-date, that is from October twenty-four, twenty-twenty-four through June twenty-twenty-five. Total revenue received is three million nine-hundred-sixty-nine-thousand seven-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars at actual. Budget is three million five-hundred-one-thousand five-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars. Total expenditures for general fund, again, that's October twenty-twenty-four through June twenty-twenty-five, actual is three million five-hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand four-hundred-and-fifteen dollars versus our budget at three million five-hundred-and-one dollars. Uh, I'm sorry, five-hundred-one-thousand five-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars. The net revenue was four-hundred-and-ten, uh, four-hundred-and-ten-thousand three-hundred-and-nine dollars. And as you can see, we are in the positive from year-to-date, from the month of June. For that, I'll go straight to enterprise. Enterprise, I will do year-to-date, that's from October twenty-twenty-four through June twenty-twenty-five. Actual revenue received for the enterprise is three million four-hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand two-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars versus year-to-date budget, two million six-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand three-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars. Total expenditures, year-to-date, actual is two million twenty-one-thousand two-hundred-and-sixty-four dollars versus year-to-date budget of one million eight-hundred-and-ten-thousand and seventy-six dollars. The net revenue for the year-to-date is a hundred and three-thousand six-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars. That completes the report for the month of June, including the rest of the discussion. Need questions?
I want to make a motion on this, please.
Make a motion that we approve the chief, the annual report.
Second. Motion has been made by Mayor Pro Tem Abar, second by Councilmember Bigby, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed, motion is passed.
Agenda item five D, to approve the updated twenty-twenty-five employee handbook, Dr. Annette Goldberg, City Administrator.
Thank you, Ingrid. Mayor and council, as I discussed yesterday, I made some clarifications to the employee handbook, there's nothing substantially changed from it. And I think Ingrid, she gave you all the copy, and she highlighted areas that we talked about yesterday. So there's no substantial change, it's just clarification.
And may I add, Annette, if council will look at the, there's two, you have two, you have the original, which you approved, and then you have the most recent, but you can tell which one is which, by the date on the front.
Thank you.
Make a motion that we approve the updated two thousand twenty-five employee handbook.
Second. Motion has been made by Mayor Pro Tem Abar, second by Councilmember Bigby, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed, motion is passed.
Now I said, Nick, I'm gonna read it.
Okay, uh, I would like to reflect that Councilmember Burton, uh, overnight. For the motion is passed.
Agenda item five E, discussion consideration of the possible action to update a purchasing policy to reflect amended ordinance number two, two-zero-two-four-dash-zero-six-dash-twenty-five-eight. Dr. Annette Goldberg, City Administrator.
Mayor and council, I provided you a copy of the matrix. If you take a look at the matrix, what's in red has been changed. And as I stated yesterday, the mayor has the authority up to four thousand ninety, nine-hundred-ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents. And as you can see, it's the city of Arcoa mayor, and anything above that is now city council. And so that needed to be changed in the policy, and it's already been changed in ordinance some time ago.
And make a motion.
Make a motion that we approve the updated purchasing policy.
Second. Yeah, uh, motion has been made by Mayor Pro Tem Abar, second by Councilmember Jones, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed, motion is passed.
Agenda item five F, to approve permanent waivers for community beautification project and creation of a committee for such waivers, Police Chief Carl Bryant.
So this committee that we wanna form is part of Mayor Williams' beautification project, and with code enforcement, we are seeing a lot of people who are not able to pay to beautify their property and pay the permit that comes with the cost to beautify their property. So we would like to create a committee and also go through an application process for those people that may be eligible to get permanent waivers with, with this program.
I think a lot, a lot of them have been carried over, people who are not able to.
Correct, yes.
And so, uh, we already have three volunteers, I know, for this.
For the committee. And we, in the eligibility, they don't have, uh, it'll be based, have guidelines that we base it on, and the committee will make the determination of who is the actual major.
Is there a limit on how much?
So that will be up to the committee to decide, I mean, because sometimes, based on, um, they'll come up with eligibility guidelines and, and all that, so it just won't be.
Chief, I mean, council, you're gonna, you're gonna bless these guidelines, and the guidelines will, will establish probably limits per application, those kind of things. You'll get another bite at this apple, as well as, we'll probably create some sort of right of appeal to council if somebody, that way, you, I mean, at the end of the day, you're still a general law city, so we'll give the, kind of the last say to council, if necessary.
And I make a motion that we approve the account for the community's beautification project and creation of a community facility.
Second. Motion has been made by Councilmember Jones, second by Councilmember Bigby, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed, motion is passed.
Agenda item five G, to approve forgiveness of a high-water utility bill due to a water leak discovered by MOC at five-year-old State Post Road, Mayor Vito Williams.
Yes, this is, um, this is one where we had an elderly gentleman who had a leak on his property and was not able to see it because it was, had been raining and stuff, so he didn't know that there was a leak on the property. And MOC noticed it right off, cause the bill was way higher than, it was like six thousand and some dollars. And they knew good and well that that was, that's from one month to the next, so they knew something was wrong, and they went out and saw that there was a, a leak. They informed the resident, and they got it repaired immediately. And so we are asking this council to forgive this amount and allow them to pay what their average rate normally is, because this was just something that happened that they, was beyond their control. And so that's what this item is about, asking to forgive this of that six dollars and some of the dollars for the leak.
I'm gonna make a motion that we do forgiveness if thousands have a post road, uh, extreme power.
Motion has been made by Councilmember Jones, second by Councilmember Bigby, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed, motion is passed.
Agenda item five H, to approve two full-time equivalents for the maintenance department, um, Mayor Vito Williams.
So this is just a matter of, the, the city is growing, um, we've, we've, you know, got a lot more homes in the city now, and, and just in different areas that need to be maintained. We are having to do a lot of ditch and drainage work, and, uh, we're gonna be doing the westward top of the volume, but all those things need to be, uh, maintained. Our maintenance department, uh, is, is, it needs to grow with that, because like I say, I drive, I drive through the neighborhood, and sometimes I see the, the grass has grown so high, and the right of way and stuff. But, you know, with, with the rain and all of that stuff, by the time I go back a couple of days, it's like it's grown up again, and they, they're moving on to another area. But we need enough staff in order to be able to accommodate the need and to provide maintenance, so we don't have to keep paying these high-dollar amounts every few years to, uh, to maintain the volumes of the ditches and those type of things. So that's why we're asking for two positions of maintenance.
I make a motion that we approve two full-time equivalent.
Yeah, of course. If we approve two, you just talking about two bodies, right?
Yes.
Now you're talking about equipment, you, you, to do a ditch, you gotta have certain equipment, they gotta get trained, backhoes and things like that. I'm really not into adding two people to the maintenance department just to cut the grass, because they do have good equipment that they work with now. How to utilize it, that's on them, to get the best, uh, production out, out of what they are getting done. There's no way you can add two individuals in the maintenance department, and now you're talking about doing ditch cleaning and all that kind of stuff. You just don't go out there and drop a bucket in the ditch and start digging, it has to be shot, sited, sited, and, uh.
Well, we don't get qualified.
Well, I mean, you have to get people qualified, and then, you know, you're talking about adding two people, and then that's gonna toss equipment, you gotta buy equipment. Trucks to haul it with and all that kind of stuff. I mean, you're talking about building a, a department for public works.
Absolutely, that is exactly where we're moving.
That's what I'm saying, that's, that's, that's a lot to ask for, with these guys.
As the city grows, as the city grows, as the city grows, we have to grow with it. We got, if we gonna be a city and we gonna grow, we gotta do what needs to be done to accommodate the needs that we're running. And so that's what we're trying to do, we're trying to be proactive, we're not gonna wait until, you know, till it gets too much, and then we gotta try to figure out something. We wanna be proactive in this, and yes, we certainly are, I've said this a number of times, we need to start looking for, moving towards public works, not just maintenance and cutting grass. And we are going to need equipment, yes, yes we are. We're gonna need some equipment that, that can handle some of the things we need to do, but I think our residents are working, I think we need to invest in the residents, and that's something that we haven't done in a long time, and something that I think we need to do.
You're there, but I'm just saying, go ahead.
Make a motion that we approve two full-time equivalent personnel for the maintenance department.
Second. Motion has been made by Mayor Pro Tem Abar, second by Councilmember Jones, all in favor. All opposed.
Aye.
So noted, uh, four ayes, one nay, uh, the motion is passed.
The next three items are discussion only. Five I, to amend the ordinance relating to the city council meeting dates and times, David Osten, City Attorney.
Mayor and council, it's kind of just been an observation over the last several months, and we've had the need for a bunch of special meetings. That's in part because you just had a lot going on, and also in part because you're growing and have more on your table. So I propose the ideas for consideration of adding, other general law cities use this, adding a second regular meet, established meeting date, that you don't necessarily need, but then when you need it, you have it, you don't have to call a special called meeting, and there'd be no need for a super majority for that called meeting. Just a thought, something for y'all to discuss. Again, the idea would be to, you, you already have a scheduled second Tuesday of the month meeting, maybe the fourth Tuesday of the month. Just set that as a regular meeting date, you wouldn't even have to cancel it, you just wouldn't call it unless you need it. Just something to have in your back pocket in case you need it, really comes in handy during holidays or summertime, when maybe it's hard to get four people together.
In budget time.
In budget, yes, correct. So, again, there's really no downside, you wouldn't have to cancel it, other than just making sure people know that you may call that as a, as a regular meeting for a time. So yeah, I'm, we're waiting, mayor, from direction from council, and then we'll put together on this.
And I think that's a good idea. And we, we have that in the past, so.
Add it.
So I think the fourth, uh, Tuesday.
I just do that, cause it makes sense.
No, no, that, that's what we, so I think that's a good idea.
Everybody else, what do you think? Any objection to, I mean, there's really not a downside, other than you may get a resident or two that are confused about it, and just let them know, hey, we, there'll be a posting agenda, isn't it? Okay, we'll put something together, mayor, bring it back.
Okay.
Agenda item five J, uh, possible ordinance for septic tanks, Mayor Vito V. Williams, and David Osten, City Attorney.
You want me to go?
You go.
Okay. This is another, I mean, this really kind of was necessitated out of our limitations associated with sewer provisions in the city. Right now, we're, we're tapped out of the ability to provide people sewer connections at this point, and we're gonna have to wait. So we've discussed options, and really, we don't have an option, I mean, we're at capacity right now, hopefully that'll be the case in eighteen months, two years. But in the meantime, that really kind of puts a stop to all proposed development. So, uh, one idea that came up was maybe the opportunity as an alternative to our public systems is to allow people to put in a private septic system, as long as they have the ability, which is dependent on the size of the lot and some other, uh, variables associated with the ability to create the system properly, it's all very heavily regulated by TCDQ. It won't have to be permitted through them, but just something to see if that's something y'all wanted to entertain, until we can get full capabilities again for, uh, people to come in seeking permits for, for that matter.
Yeah, I think we've had a, we've had quite a few calls about, uh, being able to move forward, and having property in the city, and not being able to deal on property and stuff. And, uh, so TCDQ said there's a particular septic system that they will authorize and approve. It will be regulated, like I said, through TCDQ, and you will have to have a regular maintenance provider to, uh, make sure that it is clean and within, and compliant with TCDQ regulations. All of that, make sure that you also have enough space on your property in order to equip the septic system. They cannot give me an estimated cost of the system.
Unfortunately, there.
Yeah, they're gonna give me an estimated cost, because it depends on the size that you did and, and all of that, that stuff, so. But that is an option that we are looking at for our resident. TCDQ will require you to, um, maintain, uh, regular inspections with them for, for two years, and have regular maintenance, a provider to do the maintenance. I think that's something that the city will probably tack on and say, if you're gonna have this thing, we need to continue to see ma, regular maintenance.
At least the right to do that. We reserve the right to do that.
Right, right, to have regular maintenance, continue.
I, I mean, before we proceed with this, I mean, we're not necessarily obligated, there might, we might get pushed into a corner, it's related to provision of utilities, but for now, I mean, we don't have to do this. Do y'all wanna entertain it or not? I mean, it's, uh, it's really kind of a Band-Aid for the next couple of years, until we can get the expansion completed.
And then once we get that, and they would have to discontinue?
Well, that's the problem, is, I mean, you can't just require them king's X convert, cause then they, they. because then they, they have all this capital expense.
Yeah, it's very expensive.
So we would, we would have to allow them to almost fully amortize their investment. I mean, and a system like that could have a useful life of thirty, forty years. I don't know. Probably, it might. They're not cheap. I mean, they're ten thousand plus.
Well, well, the thing about it is that hopefully we'll have connections and once we get connections, we won't allow any more septic.
No, it might create some kind of grandfather.
Buy all this money.
Private systems out there, just to let you know, that would be a possible unintended consequence of this, but, or we could just deal with this on a case-by-case basis if we get, we have to deal with the provision of utilities, we deal with it at that time. We had a meeting today about something similar to that, so, um, and just wait until we complete the project.
Yeah, I think there's something that many residents, several residents are, are waiting on, uh, uh, an answer from this council for. And because they are, they kind of want to start building on it, you know.
Well, I mean, I guess the answer would also be is council interested in allowing for that kind of thing or not.
Could we get some more information, like what the costs are?
I'm sure. Mayor, so you still here? Do you have any idea?
You can't, you can't come up with a cost.
There's some.
There's probably way too many variables. I mean, depending on the size or capacity and.
Yeah, how many bedrooms is this residential commercial, but even with bedrooms, you know, is it a one bedroom, two bedroom, three? Uh, and it's what it is, it's almost, these are onsite sewage facilities, OSSF. And generally, generally, uh, those systems can range anywhere just for installation, I'm gonna say between maybe thirteen and twenty-six thousand dollars. Uh, just like I said, there's so many variables in that because you gotta steal electricity out there because it's not. I mean, it's gonna have pump-up heads, you gotta have enough spray area, uh, the spray area's gotta stay so many feet off the property line, uh, and then, uh, you gotta have enough land, you know, and then it's gotta be safe to drain.
How much land do you have?
Again, it depends upon.
It's gotta be more than your average five thousand.
So typically, the way it works, TCEQ rule is this, uh, if you have a public water system, you gotta have a minimum half acre to do any type of septic system. If it was planted before.
Nineteen eighty-one.
Thank you. Uh, then, and you can still make the other parameters fit, then it can be less than a half acre.
Parameters being setbacks for the drain area and all that kind of stuff.
That's correct.
They're not gonna wave on those kinds of stuff.
That's right. But I'm gonna just help touch on some things that we've done before, we being the city, uh, is when we did the water system. And this is kind of how you can, I mean, it's up to this diocese to decide how it wants to do it. But one of the things, when we first got into the water business, uh, here in Arcola, one of the things we said was, uh, number one, uh, we wouldn't allow, if, if you came on early when you first had the water system, you know, it was X amount of dollars to connect. But we didn't make everybody connect. We said we'd wait, we wouldn't allow you to build a new one because they're gonna come. Well, it's gonna act up, you're gonna need a new well, and then that's when they're gonna have to come along. Same thing, you're gonna kind of have the same thing in this scenario too. A, a septic system is not gonna last thirty years. It ain't gonna last thirty years, no. You're gonna have major issues with it in thirty years.
I don't know.
No, no, no.
I haven't. One private system.
But, uh, so they don't last long. And again, it just depends on the usage and everything else. Uh, and you can also put, you can structure your rules in such a manner that, uh, you know, as long as the one owner's there, blah, 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 they can stay on it. Uh, I mean, there's a, a myriad of ways that it can be worked out that's palatable for ninety-nine percent of the people. One percent you'll never make happen and it doesn't matter. Any other questions you have on me?
So I mean, really it would be, do you want us to work on putting a regulation together that allows for it with conditions?
Yeah.
Or not?
Or can we just, you know, take it one off?
Well, you're really not allowing for development, but every now and then you might get somebody in where something of that makes sense.
Yeah, but, but.
If a homeowner comes in and says.
It's not gonna be practical.
I wanna try it.
Yeah, there's.
It's really not. I mean.
Yeah, it's, here's your option. Either way, you can do this. So there's your option. I mean, yeah, we're not gonna tell you no. I never tell none of y'all no. I just tell you what it takes to tell you yes.
So does it last like ten years?
Oh, you'll get ten. No, you'll get ten.
Ten years.
You can get ten. If, if you maintain it. And the other thing, again, keep in mind, this is an onsite sanitary sewer system. And so, uh, it's gotta be checked and they're, they're basically putting chlorine tablets in there. It's like, it's a mini wastewater treatment plant is what it is. That's the best way I can describe it.
Yeah, with a discharge onsite.
Yeah, that, I mean, that, that's, I mean, literally, that's the best way I can, in simplistic terms, I can, I can say it. And so that's why you gotta make sure it can drain. You can have green grass, you don't have to water it. That area right there is.
Vegetation.
But it's treated. It's treated. It's not for human consumption.
Wow.
But it's treated and, and that's where it goes. And that also depends upon the type of soil you have, uh, because you got a soil absorption. I mean, it's still kind of going to the ground and so.
Inspection.
Yeah, so.
It's got, it's gotta be inspected, so typically.
So is the city gonna inspect it?
No, 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 that's a, that's a different guy. You gotta get a contract, uh, with a certified company that comes in and I wanna say, I'm gonna say maybe twice a year, what? I, I don't remember the exact number of times. Yeah, they come, they file a report. Also too, when you, uh, they file a report, it would reach the city or TCEQ.
But two years, then it meets a TCEQ.
Yeah.
And then after that, we have to, yeah.
So the way it works in Fort Bend County, it's forever. And it gets filed up record on the county clerks. So that way, whenever you sell the house or whatever, it's gonna pop up in the top report that says, you know, I got a private septic system and I got to maintain a, either twice a year or once a year maintenance contract with a septic company to come out and check my system to make sure that I got chlorine tablets going in there so when the water sprays out, it's not, you know, causing health and safety matters to, issue to.
Or to the site. It's good for the property owner to have that over record too.
Right.
Yeah.
Would you say the minimum lot size should be at least two acres?
So, no, so if, if you're gonna have, so the way the rules work is, number one, if you have, the first part doesn't matter. Uh, the first part is you gotta have a minimum one acre for private water well, private septic. That's, that's, if you don't have it, one acre, minimum net, black and white, it says that. The second part of it is if you have public water, if you have public water and private septic, it's a minimum of half acres, zero point five acres.
Which would be the case here because I don't think, we're not letting people drill wells. I don't think that's on the case.
That's right, no, they, no. But, but the other part of that is, uh, and you can do smaller, like a lot, but you have to meet all the criteria and the subdivision had to have been established prior to, I'm not, nineteen eighty-one, but whatever it says in the record. But I, I think she wrote about nineteen eighty-one.
That's what TCEQ says.
Well, I'm not sure, I mean, you're talking about twenty thousand square feet.
Yeah.
You get the setbacks and if there's a structure on there, it'd be, I mean, it's probably gonna be about that anyway.
Well, but the problem here in Arcola, like let's say in Pondale Manor, Pondale Manor, you got lots that are twenty-five by one fifth.
They're not gonna be, they're not gonna qualify.
That's right. But that's my point. You got, you got all kind of lots all over. I mean, it's not just Arcola, but that's anywhere in the world.
Sometimes they have two lots together.
Well, as long as they mean setbacks is what he's saying. Pre eighty, I assume this neighborhood's pre eighty-one.
I don't know which one we're talking about, but, you know, but.
If, if it is, then, and that's, that's not an issue as far as.
That's right.
We, they still have to meet the distance from the structure and.
The property line, contact corners and, it's, it's a lot of things. And it's gonna be designed, uh, they gotta get a registered sanitarium to design it. It's gonna get submitted to TCEQ. But if you live out in the county, that's what you gotta do. I mean, it, it's, it's nothing different than what, if you live out in the county, you still have to do that same thing. So it's nothing that is just, you know, it's, it's consistent in the state of Texas. Any other questions on me?
So I guess, I mean, I don't know how reasonable an option that's gonna be for most residents, but is there something y'all wanna take a look at or not?
Well, I mean, maybe, maybe, you never know what people can. But I think, what, what we can say is that we are creating an.
We did the best we could to come up with an alternative and fix our wastewater pit and pit. That was kind of the thought process.
Leave it up to them.
You know, anybody really opposed to it? I'll definitely need Mayor's help with putting something together, but it sounds like it's pretty familiar with how Fort Bend County does it, so I think it would be a starting place.
If you do do this, could we add in there that after ten years, they have to abandon the system?
If we determine the useful life is approximately that and that's a reasonable useful life, then yeah, I think we could argue it's been fully amortized.
So, and, and, and to get off of it, it has to be decommissioned and you have to have a license, uh, a license, a certified, that somebody that is actually have some type of relationship with TCEQ.
So, uh, no, you can get a regular contractor, but we can put the language, because we've done this many times in cities like Rosenberg where they had, people had septic system and here's a criteria to use, uh, to be able to get off of a septic.
Let me say, we, we gonna follow, TCEQ is gonna be regulating this, we gonna follow what TCEQ say.
Well, we're granted from doing anything in conjunction with what they require.
Yeah, that, what they have, somebody that is registered with them to decommission this thing.
Well, then, I'll work with Mayor's, we'll come up with, uh, kind of a draft for y'all to, do you want to go for that?
Okay, sounds good.
Agenda item five K, election sign, Mayor Vito V. Williams.
Electronic sign, yes. We, we, we talked about this on yesterday and, uh, we need to find ways to, uh, work with, uh, the person who took the sign down to get the sign back, electronic sign, and uh, I think if, uh, whoever has access to this person's information and, you know, I know you think we wanted to work on that too, uh, we'll, we'll, we need to follow up to get our sign back. And David, if we have to, unfortunately, at this point, if we have to go that route, we need to, we need to push forward to get our sign back. Uh, city's probably that can.
I think y'all kind of informally created a little task force to try to do something about it. We'll huddle up next meeting and see if any partners.
The information, so we can contact with them, we will look for them. Agenda item six, plans, plaques and permits. This item is up for discussion, consideration and possible action. Six A, a resolution accepting the public infrastructure facility, facilities for post-op point section five in the city of Arcola, recommended by the city engineer, Mr. Mayor Turner Kaluza
All right, this is, uh, post-op section one, I'm sorry, post-op section five. Um, we, it's been, been a year. Typically what happens is on any development, Mr. Developer will go in, do the construction. At the end of the construction, we'll do a final inspection, they'll put a one-year maintenance bond up, we'll make sure everything is in order. And at that point in time, we stored a one-year maintenance period, whereas he's still responsible for fixing anything that breaks or whatever. That's our one-year warranty period. At the end of that one year, actually, it's at the eleventh month. We go out there because we got a bond, so if he walks, whatever, and the bond is always in your name as well, so that way we can go out there and, and, you know, the concrete all fill in, it's all broken up. You need to fix that. If you don't fix it, we can call the bonding company. It's, it's a pain, but that's why we make him put it there and make him fix that. Generally, that's not the case. Most about, ninety-nine percent of the developers are gonna fix it because they got product out there. Uh, in this case, we have, uh, we actually, uh, did a one-year walkthrough on June twenty-fifth. They had a few minor items, they were fixed. We went back out there again and now we're at, and it will, it will resolve on July twenty-first. And so now, we bring an item to council, uh, for the city to make formal acceptance of the public improvements within post-op point section five. And I believe they prepared a resolution for you as well. Other than that, that is it. I did it before on, whatever the other section was before that. Uh, you have the resolution for you. I'll entertain any questions you may have of me as it relates to that particular item right there.
Yeah, it will be, it will be the sign.
Okay, you're the sign. Okay, we, I make a motion approved.
You say a resolution?
It's under six A, post-op point, section five in the city of Arcola, Texas. It's recommended in the city.
Motion has been made by Councilmember Jones, second by Mayor Pro Tim Abar. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Uh, Ms. Bigby is a nay, she said.
Yeah.
All opposed? Uh, the motion is passed.
Agenda item seven, contracts and agreements. This item is up for discussion, consideration and possible action. Um, seven A, to approve a contract with Kaluza Inc. for engineering and surveying services for Westport Chocolate Bayou drainage improvements from Farm Market five twenty-one to South Prime, city of Arcola, Fort Bend County, Texas, in the amount of forty-eight thousand fifty dollars in surprise funds, Mr. Mayor Turner Kaluza Inc.
All right, this is, uh, Westport Chocolate Bayou. This is your drainage outlet for the city of Arcola. Uh, it actually starts way up here by the airport. It meanders its way all the way through everything in the drain, uh, actually starts at highway six. So comes from post-op point, goes on down south through there, uh, and then ultimately keeps continuing south. And so, um, what's going to happen on this one, you had a hurricane that's come through that's knocked a bunch of debris and trees down. You've had, uh, it has not been maintained. We've kind of talked about this before when we looked at this five, seven years ago. Uh, and you've also had people that have, uh, built things, uh, that impedes flow potentially, uh, but definitely are crossing Westport Chocolate Bayou. Uh, one Saturday, I went out with the mayor, we were driving and we seen a homeowner building a structure across Westport Chocolate Bayou. I'm like, I know we don't have a, I've never even seen anything as it relates to that and they, you know, and I'm not judging, or what, you can build a lot in the weekend, you know, and so that's, that's when it all happens right there. I will tell you, everybody that does anything, it's gonna happen on the weekend. They gonna build it and it's gone. And so you have some of that. Uh, prior to the first time, I'm, I'm sure there's fences, there's all kinds of stuff that's going across there. So this contract right here for us to prepare plans, specs, go through the bidding process and to assist as we go through the construction phase services. Uh, other than that, uh, that's all I had to present. I'll entertain any questions that you may have of me as it relates to this item. And I will tell you that, I know when I see my survey crews, there's some landowners that I'm gonna make sure, and I'm gonna ask for police to go out there with us because, you know, it's just, uh, the safety of our, our employees is number one. And I do not put our survey crews or any of our employees in arms' way and I just understand how things like this work. Any questions on me? Not, I'll go sit down.
I'm making, I'm taking a motion.
I make a motion to approve contract and agreements with Kaluza Inc. for engineering and surveying service for Westport Chocolate Bayou drainage improvements from Farm, FM five two oh one to South Prime, city of Arcola, Fort Bend, Texas, in the amount of forty-eight thousand fifty dollars.
May I get a second? May I get a second on the motion?
Second.
Motion has been made by Councilmember Jones, second by Councilmember Bigby. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is passed.
Agenda item eight, ordinances and resolutions. All items are up for discussion, consideration of and possible action. Agenda item eight A, adopted an ordinance of the city council of the city of Arcola, Texas, setting a preliminary ad valorem tax rate for the city of Arcola for fiscal year twenty-two. for fiscal year twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six, setting the date and time of a public hearing to be held regarding the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six tax rate, and approving an effective date. Public hearing to be held on Tuesday, September, that should be correct, it should be September sixteen.
It's correct in the the ordinance.
Yes. At six P M. here at City Hall, one three two two, highway six, Arcola, Texas, seven seven five eight three. Dr. Enrico Burton.
Mayor and council, we have received our tax options from the county. And I will read them out to you and then I will also say to you the proposed rate that this administration applied to. So the known revenue rate is point sixty-four fifty-nine. The voter approval rate is point seventy-two twenty-seven. And the diminish rate is point nine two zero. And we are proposing that the that the tax rate not be increased, that it remain the same. It is coming here.
What if it?
The proposed tax rate that is remaining the same is point six four nine six one nine zero zero. And that's what you see in the ordinance. Also in the ordinance, we have broken out the M and O tax rate as well as the debt service tax rate.
Okay, so.
I make a motion to be approved, the preliminary ad valorem tax rate for the city of Arcola.
Second.
Is this also including setting the public hearing date for September sixteen?
I think we just understand the motion to approve the ordinance as a reason.
Okay, very good.
Remember, this is a record.
With with the correction of the September sixteen twenty twenty-five date. Okay, on this one, I need a roll call vote. So Councilmember Burton. Councilmember Jones. Mayor Pro Tim Abar.
Aye.
Councilmember Bigby. Councilmember Jackson.
Aye.
Motion has been, I didn't go to the court, but anyway, the motion is carried. Five to zero, thank you.
Agenda item eight B, action to amend resolution number zero six dash two five dash two zero two four D to reflect the current date of the of the council workshops on the Monday before the second Tuesday of the month.
Mayor, I mean, really, we plan on tying this in, it's more of a housekeeping matter with the ordinance establishing the second meeting day. So we'll we'll fix it all, it'll all be part of the same. It's really just, there's nothing to do, is there is there an actual resolution in front of them tonight?
No, there isn't.
I think it should be part of the actual work, I mean, because a workshop is technically a regular meeting. You don't treat it as that, so we'll treat it that way and this we're by a regular meeting.
Okay.
No, then I'll just add, it'll all become part of the.
Aye.
Okay. Agenda item eight C, to approve a resolution, censuring, Councilmember Fred Burton, Mayor B. Williams.
Last last month, the council voted to, for a censored resolution based on some actions that had taken place regarding Councilmember Burton. So I'll just read the resolution. The resolution of the city council of the city of Arcola, Texas, censuring, Councilmember Fred Burton for comments made concerning city employees, provided for incorporation of preamble and an effective date. Whereas Councilmember Fred Burton has made certain false and defamatory statements concerning the mayor, the chief of police, the city administrator, community engagement coordinator, and other employees using the Arcola citizens Facebook page. And whereas the city council finds that such comments made by Councilmember Fred Burton were inappropriate and warrant public censure, now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Arcola, Texas, that section, section one, the facts and statements contained in the preamble are hereby found to be true and correct and are incorporated herein and made a part hereof of all for all purposes. The Arcola chief of police filed a letter of complaint on July eighth, twenty twenty-five against Councilmember Burton for certain comments made via Facebook by Councilmember Burton. Such complaint is attached herein and incorporated herein for all purposes. The mayor, Dr. B. Williams, has been harassed and falsely characterized on Facebook and YouTube posts by Councilmember Fred Burton and his associates, requiring a cease and desist notification to Mr. Burton on March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five by the mayor's private legal counsel. A peace bond against Fred Burton was issued by Fort Bend County precinct two judge on August twelfth, twenty twenty-four. Yet Councilmember Burton continues to harass and defamatory commentary. Councilmember Fred Burton falsely accused city administrator Dr. Net Warharto during public session on June tenth, twenty twenty-five, and engaged further in the harassment and defamatory characterization by displaying a list of false statements about Dr. Warharto of the general public's view. He later posted this information on his Facebook page as well. Councilmember Fred Burton continues to harass, slander, and post damaging misinformation about Pacilla Graham, the community engagement coordinator, to embarrass and cause professional reputational harm. This deliberate spread of misinformation by Councilmember Burton, not only did it impact individuals, but also erodes trust and integrity within our community and city government, it is imperative that we uphold respectful and truthful communication in our civic spaces and among city employees, fellow council members, and the public, even when disagreeing, as harassment and the international and the intentional spread of misinformation have no place in affecting public discourse. The city council hereby finds that the comments made by Councilmember Burton concerning the chief of police, Mayor Williams, Dr. Net Warharto, Pacilla Graham, and other comments concerning the city officials and employees are inappropriate and do not represent the city of Arcola or its city council, and therefore must be addressed by public censure. This resolution shall become effective immediately upon its passage, duly passed, approved, and adopted on this date if passed by this council.
Well, I guess I can respond to that laundry list of of me. Number one is that's a public Facebook, I mean, it's my own Facebook page. And I know that yourself and Pacilla Graham has posted things about me. I find it interesting that I could be censored and the city wastes taxpayers' dollars to have the lawyer draw up a resolution like this. The next thing is, we have such shallow memories. When we walked out and stormed and did all that crap out in the parking lot when you was a private citizen, I sat in that chair. And, you know, these politics, you gotta have sixteen. And I see that the mayor doesn't have it because he didn't did everything to me that you can imagine. Vote was running to lawyers, getting letters sent to me and and all these peace bonds and all this other stuff. Not only that, spending the last ten months investigating six, six, seven years that I was here. I find it interesting that this council would even vote for something like that because whether I said it or not, and the the page is gonna still go on. And.
But doesn't need to.
It doesn't matter, it's a page, it's a social media page. If you don't like what's on social media, don't look at it. I mean, y'all watch it more than I do. Y'all watch it more than I do. And it's a shame that it is made into this council meeting just because you don't like what somebody said, or like what I said, or like what Roger said, or anybody said. I mean, you spend so much money on legal fees around the city. Every, I mean, the lawyer, I mean, I guess you get about fifteen phone calls a day or week or whatever because, I mean, they spend a lot of money. Spend a lot of money with this with this attorney over here. Every time you look up, it's something coming from the attorney. You can't even file for open records report around here without the attorney having to look at it. What happened to just open records? If it's open, just give it to the person. Why we got to be so secretive of everything? Yes, the page don't say a lot of things that I like, y'all page don't say a lot of things I like. But I even got screenshots of them, people send them to me. Don't see me crying about nothing like that, I don't care. So if y'all guys are censoring me, whatever that mean, whatever you wanna call that, go ahead. If this council want to vote for that, go ahead. But I get a nail on that vote because it don't make no sense. I mean, we pay this attorney, show y'all how taxpayers' dollars getting wasted. We pay this attorney for our dress rehearsal, which they call a workshop, which was yesterday. He already get paid for Friday when he look at the agenda and prove the agenda. Every time this phone ring, it costs the city money. And we pay him again to show up here again today. Talk about wasteful spending. On a letter like this? So be it. But it's not gonna stop anything, I'm just here to tell you. It won't stop nothing. If I break the law? The law is broken. What can you do if I break the law? Arrest me, fine me, whatever the case may be, I don't see no fine in front of me. But you have your moment in the song with this censure, go ahead. Thing is ridiculous. I think Facebook thing is ridiculous. Wasted taxpayers' dollars, go ahead.
Mr. Burton, you know, I heard you saying about how much money we spending on. I remember when you brought in that second engineer, and I told you, we had an engineer, we had an honest engineer. We had Mr. Turner. But you spent, I don't know how much money, because, you know, we didn't get papers back then. We didn't, we didn't, we asked for.
All you have to do is a Gmail, all you have to do is a Gmail.
She's talking now.
All you have to do is a Gmail, go ahead, I'm listening.
I asked for papers, I never got them. But the point is, we had an engineer, we had a city engineer. But Mayor Burton, at that time, had to bring in another engineer. An engineer that was a yes person, that didn't care if the what the person wanted, the company wanted, was good for the citizen or not, didn't consider the citizen. And from all the stuff that was going on, from people who came to me and told me things, a lot of that stuff was illegal, but the DA called it unethical. So to me, unethical is illegal. But you worrying about how much money we spending on a lawyer who's working for the city and the citizen? When you spend money on a, I call it a crooked engineer that did whatever he was told. So I would rather the city spend whatever we need to spend on honest thing than on mess, on stuff that's corrupting the city, giving us a bad name. We don't need a bad name as far as that page, never looked at it and never entered because I know it's a bunch of lies. And see, I don't have time to entertain lies. But I know some people have itchy ears, they rather hear lies than the truth. But the thing about it is, what we need to do right now, forget all that's been done because we can't change what you did. But we can go forward, move forward. And whether you want to go along with us is good, we can, it's still good because you only have one vote. And one vote ain't gonna change nothing, especially if the majority say yay and you can keep on saying nay. Thank you.
No, I just know it's a lot of paperwork that wasn't turned, Mr. Burton, as far as I was signed. I'm still thinking about the sign. Because if you're gonna have someone to keep, keep some, some, some of your precious, you know, what I'm saying, like that sign, you're gonna have where your sign is, who's over your sign, how long your sign is gonna be there. And then if that sign is moved, you should be informed that that sign was moved. Where was it moved? And what was the cost? Because this man should have, when he moved it, he should have been paid. He shouldn't be coming to us with a bill. That's 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 my whole thing. And I have for Mr. Burton to say that he doesn't know anything, he doesn't know where it is, he doesn't, he don't even really know the guy. He don't really know the guy or nothing, but, you know, I think it 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 should be looked into further is what I'm saying, and I hope council can try to get to the bottom of it, what happened to the sign? Because it wasn't a cheap sign, it came out of our budget.
You know what, you guys? This really, really, the activities that's been going on for the last year has really gotten next to me. B. is my neighbor, been my neighbor for over twenty-five years. And I look up to her. And for us to be acting the way we're acting is just really unprofessional, very unprofessional. People everywhere, all over the country, see all this that happened down here in San Antonio. And it had really gotten next to me. I have to do therapy because of everything that's going on. We as a black, I'm gonna say it again, as a black race, we need to get along. It's time out for all the rock throwing, name calling. And keep in mind, whatever you do to somebody, it's coming back to you. It may take a while, but it's coming back. And if it don't come back to you, it'll come back to your family. So you gotta be careful what you say, what you do, how you say it. It's time out, y'all, we need to get along. We need to do better than what we are doing. Other races are laughing at us. They laugh, they might not say it, but they going home and, little crazies down there, acting so crazy down in Alcoa. I know this thing. And it's time for us to get along, y'all. Because this really has bothered me. I don't say much, but this going on here has really bothered me. And we need to pray for each other. We need to love each other. We need to stop hate. We need to stop each other. Act like grownups, not two-year-olds. Two-year-olds, they fight. Next minute, what they doing? What they doing? They playing. And how come we can't get along? I don't know if y'all go to church or not, but y'all need to go. Go to church and listen to what the pastor say.
Mayor, I I'd like to say something. I I want council to know that Councilwoman Jackson's not the only person going to counseling here. People's lives are being affected, employees are being affected. And to one member on this council, it might be just words and it don't bother you, but as a person receiving them, it bothers us. And many of us are going to counseling and trying to do it. We come to work to move the city forward. We love this city. We're not here to do anything harmful, we're here to move the city forward. And we work long hours doing that. So councilmember, act well your sentiment and please know you're not alone. Thank you.
And I'll say, yeah, I'm I'm really sorry that it's gotten to this point. I, everybody saw everything that happened out in that parking lot that day. That parking lot event was because I went out and I wanted to talk. Councilmember Burton had just got voted in, basically, and I felt it felt like we needed to find a way forward because we had to work together. He made it clear to me, he said it on the news, he said it everywhere on, he does not want to talk to me. I have tried to 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 take the high road, I have tried to take the high road. And sometimes, yeah, it sometimes it gets to you because it gets personal. He goes deep, he goes below the ground, below the belt. And I'm I'm human, I will take so much of it. And then I will respond. And I've always tried to respond in a respectful and professional way. I will respond, because you know what, I know I stand up for myself. Roger Biden, one of his friends that he got, that guy is pure trash. The stuff that B. says is so crass that I cannot believe that he allows this person on his page to talk to his residents who he is elected to stand up for. And I'm sorry, I, it's just to a point where we have done every. And I'm sorry. I, it's just to a point where we have done everything we can. We come in here, we got Bible verses that we give each other and stuff, and try to stay focused and just stay pointing on what we need to do in this city. Because we know that we're focused on, on the people and trying to do whatever we can. I don't care if it's the dinner was criticized by Mr. Burton. Parking lot criticized by Mr. Burton. Anything that we do positive and we try to move forward, he's getting people to criticize us. He's telling ex-employees to sue the city. He supposed to be standing up for the city. We cannot move forward like that. Mr. Burton, I have extended the olive branch to you on numerous occasions, and he has said, and he's let me know, in no uncertain terms, he ain't trying to get it. So, what I'm going to do is continue to be steadfast. And yes, I call the attorney, because you know what? I got him, and he gets fifteen of his other friends, asking for open records requests and all. So, we wanna make sure that the city of Alcoa is doing the city's business on their behalf in a way that's legal, that's right, and that's according to the law. And we gonna continue to do it. I don't care what he says. We gonna continue to do it. And if you wanna talk about how much we've paid, paid in attorney fees in the last year, we have paid on your shenanigans, two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars and thirty-one cents.
No, that's the truth.
On, on a, on, on hand, a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars
That's the truth.
To grade around a firm, to trial case, that he, against these council women, women up here, that he knew he was out, and he was found to be acting outside the scope of his authority. Sixty-four hundred dollars was spent on investigating a council member without the council's approval. The investigation we've done with him, we got council approval and authorized. Seventy-five hundred dollars for the, for being investigated to come up and to testify in court. Forty thousand dollars last week on, on a settlement, for saying some inappropriate stuff to a female former employee. Another twenty thousand dollar settlement, based on stuff that happened. We still have a plethora of other lawsuits under, from, under his, that the city is paying. So, if you wanna talk about the twenty-eight thousand dollars that we paid on investigating with all this stuff that's been going on in the city, yes, sir, we did. And, and it is moving forward. And we're gonna continue to move forward with it. And I hate, it's like you said, Councilmember Jackson, I appreciate what you say. You know what? I feel bad too. I feel bad that we're in this spot, but I will defend the city. I will defend myself at every cost. And I'm not gonna allow lies to stand. Some lies, he told this resident last week that I am prejudiced against all Indian, against Indians. That is, I don't, yeah, I, I had to take time to address it, because that's important. We have a diverse community here, and I want everybody to know. We welcome everybody, everybody to the city. We are not prejudiced. We just don't have connections. And because we don't have connections to give them, uh, uh, sewer connections, he, he said, tells people that we're prejudiced. So, listen, I, we spend too much time. This time right here, the time the chief has to get up here, we spend a lot of time around here fighting against this guy who is fighting against the city and opposed to standing with us. So, if that's, if that's the stance he's gonna take, that, this was gonna have to happen. And it's unfortunate, but I really wish that we could work together and move the city forward. At this time, council, I asked it, I have a, there's a motion on the, on the table to approve this censorship.
I don't think, Mayor, I don't think...
Huh?
I don't think a motion was...
Oh, no, okay. I'm sorry. Can I, can I make a motion? Can I get a, entertain a motion for this?
Yes, I'm, you're coming.
Resolution. Prove a resolution.
Excuse me. I can talk something about one case, I got a personal case right now, of the mayor of Alcoa. Let us, let us, let, let's...
Hold on, Mr. Resolution.
Okay. Thank you. I'll, I'll last. Okay, um...
I make a motion that we approve a resolution number pertaining to Councilmember Burton.
The censorship?
The censorship.
Okay. Second.
Motion has been made by Councilmember Jones, second by Councilmember Bigby, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All opposed?
Nay.
The motion is passed. The resolution is passed. I'm sorry. I, I, I have a resident or citizen that wants to make a comment.
It's the discretion of the chair and council, whether you wanna entertain a petition.
Okay.
Well, hold on a minute.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, thank you, for the record.
Okay. My name is Juan A. Hanso. Hi, everyone.
Hi.
I live in Alcoa for almost fifteen years. And then, I have one concern. The mayor know my case. I'm so sorry for this, the meeting again. But I want to know exactly what happened in my case, because I buy one loans at the Mainor Avenue, maybe three years ago. And then, I want to give my money for, uh, build a home over there. And then, last year, I come in for, ask what I need to do for build the house. And then, the secretary told me, okay, do you need to first call Center Point? Because you don't have an address at the property. Okay. In this case, I call the Center Point, and the Center Point told me, uh, this is your, uh, address. This memorandum is for the four twenty-three at the Mainor. This, uh, sent to the secretary this information. This information I did last year. And then, wishing this next step, the next step, she told me, you need to do the culvert bridge or driveway. For me, it's the driveway. I, I never know about the culvert, but I submit the application January ninth this year. This is ready for the application. And she told me, uh, you need to pay, uh, for the bridge or culvert. I already paid. Next. And then, January thirteenth, the next step, you need to fill there. And then, you need to pay for the dirt plants. And I have already paid for the dirt plants. And then, this is sold. Because I have many papers.
And, and, and I'll, I'll, let me, let me say, 'cause I know you came and you talked to me. Yeah, no part of it that you were, you were given a, a permit, right? And you, and then there, you found out, you found out that there are no sewer connections. The thing about it is that, I think she told you to, you have to go online to fill out an application. And there was some miscommunication there, and you didn't go online to fill out the application. And so, when, when there's no application in the system, then you don't get, you know, that, we, we can't start that building process. And I think you might pay fifty dollars for the water check, water sewer check. So, the water sewer check is just to say whether or not water and sewer can be brought to your property. That whether or not the water lines, sewer lines run over there. But in order to reserve a sewer or a water tap, you have to pay those tap fees. And if you didn't pay those tap fees, you didn't have a sewer or water tap. And at this point, uh, we, we ran, and at some point, we ran out of water sewer taps. And so, now you made plans to build, and we don't have any water sewer. No, we have water. We don't have sewer taps. And, 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 you know, and everybody who comes to us say, I just need one tap. And we don't have one tap. And, and that's why, you know, I, I know that you're not the only person that's come to us. I, I'm really trying to work with, uh, trying to call some of our partners to see if we, if they have connections that we can get. Or, you know, or the only other talent, alternative that we've come up with is septic system.
I know, I know. I, I know everything, because I talked with you last time and with Ms. Rebecca too. Because my English is not too good. Maybe sometimes I don't understand, and maybe sometimes I don't understand. But I spent money in this case, because I submit the fill, the plants for the filter, and I submit the solving. Plus, this, spent for this one, almost one thousand five hundred. Plus, the, the lady told me, the next step, you can check maybe the property. You can check the water and the sewer check. I paid fifty dollars, and I have the permit. And I told the lady, I can pay right now for the tap. And the lady told me, no, you can wait. Okay, I can wait for the filter. Next. I have the permits for the filter. I submit at January seventeenth. And then, uh, my architect told me, you need to wait up more or less six months, because you need to compact the dirt. You cannot build the house, you fill the dirt right now, and you build the house for the next day. No. Because the house may do, do like that. And the problems are for me, not, not for the architect or not for the city. And then, is why I wait for six months. And I come in one day, and I ask Ms. Rebecca, which is the next step, because I have ready the plants for the, build the house. And then, Ms. Rebecca told me, she's very nice. I, I don't have any problems with the mayor. No. Uh, because it's her job, Ms. Rebecca's her job. It's not personal, uh, maybe problem. It's, it's, uh, a lot of problems are like that right now. It's not personal. It's maybe a million or something. I have the plants too, and I spent almost four, uh, thousand for the plants until there. And I spent maybe thirty thousand on this property. And I want to know, I, I can wait for the other lot, because the other lot is okay. I can wait. But the problem for me, because I spent in wood, I spent in a lot of things here, and I want just one, because I, I think, and a lot of people, the relatives, the relatives told me, you start to build a house when you go and you call Center Point for the address, for the bridge, for the filter, because you spent money for you build your house. Maybe I wrong, maybe I know. I don't know. Because it's my first time. I have this kind of the problems.
Well, that, the, there was, you know, in terms of permitting and stuff and how things were done, one of the things, that's why we had to create a whole new process, because it's, it's okay if you got a lot of connection. You can do that. You can wait till the end and give them a connection and stuff. We're at a place where we don't have the connection. So, once you waited, once there was a wait or whatever, we don't have the connection. So, what we've done is changed the process up front altogether. You gotta, you need to pay that tap fee and, uh, that, the tap fees for the water sewer up front, so that you can reserve your tap. And that's the only way we can do it going forward. And so, we've had to make some adjustments there. There's, I know you asked me about, is there a way for us to repay you or reimburse you for your? We, we don't have any mechanisms to do that. Uh, what we can do is just add, you know, give us an opportunity to try to work, to see if we can get any connections. Or the other option would be, see if you could qualify for that OSSF plan through TCUQ, the alternative that we're offering. Uh, but at, at this time, that's the only alternatives that we do have.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh, I hear about the septic, but I, and my, I think it's not fair for me, because nobody told me, no more sour for you. Why you wait six months here? Be, because maybe somebody told me, okay, you need to move your pass. And you pay for the permits, and you pay for everything. Okay, I moved, but no. I want to follow the instructions, step by step, step by step, because I want to build the house for sir, not for me. Maybe the, the house broke at the same year.
Yeah. Well, we, that's, that's something that we're gonna have to continue to work with. Like you said, I'm not, I'm not, we're gonna be reaching out to see where we can, what we can do. Uh, I can't make any promises. There are no guarantees.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But the only other thing I can say, that we're expanding the way for the previous plan.
And then, uh, I think I want just one permit. Not many permits.
I understand, but it's a whole, it's a whole, it's a list of people who want, we don't have any.
Yeah, but I, I have many instructions, many, uh, steps I followed by CIO Alcoa, because no, follow the instructions by the secretary, or maybe for the mayor. No. I follow the instructions by the CIO Alcoa, because maybe I come in for, I ask the lady. I don't know who is the lady, but she works for the CIO Alcoa. Maybe the mayor or council, maybe knows about the process.
We're gonna, we're gonna have to, you know, we're gonna have to follow, but at this point, we, we, we really don't...
Yeah, it, it, yeah, it's, it's not your fault. Uh, I know it's...
So, let me try to see what I can do. Uh, like I say, it's about, maybe we can negotiate something with one of our partners or something. I, I don't know, and I can't give you, can't give you that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, I know. And one time, I, I'm sorry.
I, I understand, but we're not gonna be able to solve that tonight. You, we gonna have to get together with our permitting and with our other partners, and then we can...
I mean, I kinda let this go a little bit. We're getting off.
I did, I did. I know, I know. So, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to...
I have some ideas too.
It'd be good if council and our way sit, releasing some of that, that they got tied up over commercial for the last two years.
Ma'am, we, we can't, we can't, those are obligated to, those are obligated to...
They obligated, but they not gonna develop for no time soon, so we just tied up.
Mr. Burton, Councilmember Burton, if you, if you could please just...
It was just a statement, that's all. Maybe somebody...
Yeah, and then... Okay, okay, okay. No, no, no. We, we gotta, I'm gonna have to say that. We're gonna have to cut this off right now. We have to, we'll, we'll get with you though, okay? But we are gonna have to, uh, cut this off right now, 'cause we can't, we can't resolve this.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And last, I'm sorry. Last time when you had the dinner, I, I, I wait for you until the last time, because I don't, I don't like to explain a lot of things of what happened at the CIO Alcoa front, everybody, because maybe it's personal. I think, but right now...
Right. You gonna take care of what you get. I understand. You know, I understand. You, you've expended money. So, we, we'll have to, okay, so we got to move that along. And we'll, we'll, we'll have to, we'll have to get back in touch. We, we have your number and stuff. And we, you've been in contact. You talked to your architect, and you talked to your engineer, we talked to your...
Yeah, so with my architect.
We, so we'll have to, we'll have to do it.
Thank you so much for everything you do for me.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me. I need a second too. That main reason why I'm here. I'm not gonna take very long, but I'm in the same situation, but my house is already built. It's there, and I'm pretty sure you guys gonna start charging me taxes on it. And I have to leave the place where I told them this month I was leaving, where I'm leaving right now, that my house is gonna be ready. And I know that gentleman left, the one is on the window with permits. But it's, I've been coming like every week, and it's really hard. I mean, I understand what she's going through, but I'm, my house is there already, and that's all I need. So...
We, I, my answer's gonna be the same as you. I'm gonna try to negotiate with some of our partners. That's the only thing, that's the only thing I can do.
Okay, so, I need to get like a, like a information, because I only been talking to the gentleman over there on the front.
Please leave your cell phone number with the city administrator, right?
Please. Okay.
Name and number.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burton. I appreciate it. I, I do appreciate what you're, what you're talking about, so. All right, so, yes, at this time, uh, no, no, no.
Call session.
No, we're not, we're not, we're not even close with that.
If I have an update for council, I don't. This time, I'll send a beat from the very front.
Motion for adjournment?
Motion has been made by Mayor Procham, Abar, second by Councilmember Jones, for adjournments. All in, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So be it. At eight twenty-nine, the meeting is now adjourned.